I'd like to call to order the March 20th, 2018 Lake Mills City Council. Would you all stand for the flag pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call please.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
Mr. Fritsch.
Here.
Ms. Schmidt.
Here.
And Mr. Fields and Mr. Knippel previously informed staff that they'd be unavailable for this evening's meeting.
Okay, corrections and/or approval of the city council meeting of March 6th, 2018.
So move approval.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or additions and corrections? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Foster.
Abstain.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Okay. Does anyone have correspondence they would like to begin with under our next item? Okay, I will mention that we did receive a thank you note from the Main Street program for the donation that the city gives toward the program and that they appreciate our support and they appreciate working with the city and we appreciate working with them. Okay, seeing nothing else, I think we can go on to questions and public comment and we do not have a public hearing, so the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items that are not on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the signed sheet provided on the podium. We can have you speak during your agenda item if you'd like, or you could speak now if you'd like.
I'll work on that.
Okay, that would be also appropriate. And seeing no one else, we will move on to the city manager's report. Steve, it's all yours.
Why don't I just see if there are any questions?
Yes, there is. Of the stakes that are put in, some of them have kind of a lot of pinkish tag and some have blue or an orangey tag, ribbon dyed to them. What's the significance of the color?
I believe that blue is the right-of-way line, property line, and pink is the easement, the temporary limited easement.
That's where it would be.
Yep.
You're talking South Main?
Oh, on Mulberry.
On Mulberry.
I'm sorry, we didn't specify that.
I'd already gotten that question once today, so I had a pretty good idea which one. Plus on South Main, we've got all those already, so they shouldn't... If there's any staking there, that's all construction and I don't see that happening for a while.
How long will the stakes need to be in before the bid?
They prefer to keep them in until all the right-of-ways or all the temporary limited easements are acquired. We don't actually need any right-of-way.
Now, I have a question. We're in the 600 block and the stakes are like three feet in from the sidewalk. Does that mean they're going to be doing something with the sidewalk? I mean, I thought that they would be between the sidewalk and the road.
No. The sidewalk is in the right-of-way and the sidewalk is coming out.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. All new sidewalk, all new curb, all new pavement, all new stormwater.
Wow.
All new electric, all new telephone.
That means I have to move my flower bed.
Um, I wouldn't get too ambitious with that yet.
They'll let me know.
Yeah.
And they'll let everybody else know too who has flowers.
They take that easement, but it's generally just to get the grading in behind the sidewalk done because they have to fill back in along and make sure that the grade comes out over the sidewalk. So it's generally a foot or less.
But if they're replacing all the sidewalk and my flower bed ties are against the sidewalk...
Yeah, then you may have a problem.
Yeah, well, I will probably lift those out then.
Okay.
But good, it's good to know and I can tell that to the other people that ask me then. Okay, but that'll be at the earliest next year.
At the earliest.
Okay. It's... Well, this is the time where... Did you want to say anything about the fact that we got no...
I provided you with an email.
Well, yeah, but I mean, did you want to say anything at the meeting here?
Probably that I don't know a lot more than I knew at the time that I sent the email.
Well, basically, we didn't get many. We got one bid.
We got one bid.
For South Main.
Right, and it was 50% higher than the estimate, so it was an $8 million estimate and they bid $13 million, over $13 million.
Which is not good news.
No, so the state being consistent as we would be, they called and said, "We want to reject that bid," and I was like, "Yeah, we'd do the same thing. One bidder, 50% high, there's no way we'd accept that bid." I know this afternoon they were in a pretty long meeting discussing what the options were. I guess tomorrow we'll probably find out.
Okay, so there's nothing for us to report tonight and you'll be hearing down the road what that is when we find out what that is, because we don't know either at this point and neither does the state at this point.
No, they don't.
But we were all quite disappointed because it will probably result in some delay.
Yes, I'm guaranteeing it'll result in a delay.
Of South Main.
Right.
But we don't know when and how much of a delay yet.
No.
What do we... How many bids do we usually get? Three or four?
For our projects, we generally see about four to five. State projects generally see, well, depending on the year and the time and that type of stuff, anywhere from eight to five.
Okay, and is it kind of a general consensus that the reason we got so few has to do with Foxconn building in the southeast, or is that just talk?
No, there's some conversation to that and most of the bidders who were big enough to really do this job in the fashion that was laid out are really waiting for all the work at Foxconn, because I guess they're doing 52 miles of roadwork there and there's a lot of other work associated with it, so there was a lot of opportunity there that they were waiting to bid on, which is supposed to... There are 42 projects on the Foxconn going out to bid in June.
Oh, boy, a little competition, which isn't good for us at this point in time.
Right, so the combination of having a high... You remember the conversation about the liquidated damages are normally 1,700 and others 7,800? There was a lot of complaining about that. And then the tight schedule, there was a lot of complaining about that, so...
For us.
For us.
For our road.
Right.
Okay, okay. Well, that's what happens when we're not in charge, so...
Is it possible to get out of contractors upstate and fire their way to come in?
Well, the contractor bid was from Manor to Walk and people who signed up for the bid were from Bloomer, La Crosse, Verona. So it...
Yeah.
I mean, it didn't stop them from looking at the bid. It was more of a... Most of the contractors who were bidding were smaller contractors who were looking at three to four million jobs and smaller. You have to remember that when you... And Vicki can probably explain this as well as I can, but a contractor has a bond and he can only bid on the number of jobs up to that bond limit. So if you've got a bunch of small contractors and they're looking at throwing out a bunch of bids and seeing which one they get, they don't want to put all their eggs in the one... So if you've got an eight to $10 million bid bond and you can... That's the only bid you're going to be able to make, whereas if you've got three or, you know, $3 million jobs, you've got a better chance of getting at least one job. So that kind of played into this too. There was a little bit outside the realm for a lot of the people who were still bidding on these types of jobs and a lot of the big contractors indicated they were looking at working in southeast Wisconsin.
And we also got setback a little bit because of the federal government and the... With the historical district, right? That came in a little slower than we wanted it to.
Right, we would have been out in January to bid.
Which might have made a difference.
Might have.
But we don't know that.
No, but yeah, the Historic Preservation Office in Washington, D.C. sat on that. Do you remember, Vicki? It must have been four months.
Don't recall.
Because it was a long time.
That sounds about right from what I remember, too.
And so we had to kick our bid date back.
Unfortunately, you know, there are things out of our control and...
Because if you remember right, we had to have that in hand before we could start acquiring the easements.
I remember.
And then the easement takes a certain amount of period of time, because you have to start from the day that they have to be in, which was November 1st.
Yep.
You have to count back the number of days on all your JOs and all your legal requirements. So we were in a quite tight timeline even as it was.
Well, and Josh Hammer is on the job now and he is the gentleman that the people on South Main will be able to talk to. Does... Can they call City Hall if they want to talk to him?
Yes, he does have his own phone and his own emails, so they generally give that out when people want to talk to Josh.
So people on South Main, if you have more questions than what we're discussing tonight, give City Hall a call and we'll give you the number or Steve will get to talk to you or somebody will try to answer your questions, so... Okay, let's see. Anything else on the city manager's report that... Nope? Okay, let's see, I got to get back to my agenda here. All right, moving on to item seven, the acceptance of minutes of the Public Works Board meeting of February 13th, 2018 and the Housing Authority January 23rd, 2018 meetings will be placed on file. And that moves us to council business and miscellaneous licenses. And Steve will read those for us. Yeah, there's two.
There's actually... We'll do three separate ones.
Oh.
Tavern operators licenses, there's two of those, which is Christine Baumann and Taylor Turfel. Sorry.
Yeah, I meant, I was talking about tavern operators licenses. Okay, so do you want to say who those people are?
Christine Baumann and Taylor Turfel.
Okay, and...
Make a motion to approve those two licenses.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second and I need to get my agenda caught up here. Okay, any... No discussion on that, so you may call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, that passes and we now move to the combination liquor license for Jensen Rising Incorporated. This for the public is the liquor license that goes with the Century Food Store building. And I think, should we ask if they want to come up? Would you like to come up? I think people that watch this on TV would be tickled pink to see the people that are...
Let's suspend the rules.
Yes, okay.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, I want to call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And thank you, Dan. So we now have it so you can speak and I'll let you introduce yourselves.
I'm Jonathan Jensen and this is my wife, Jeanette, and we are in the process of purchasing the Century right here and it will be a Century, stay a Century.
Cool.
And we're just applying for the liquor license tonight so we can have that all ducks in a row when we're ready to go here.
Okay, and our next agenda item is also yours for the cigarette and tobacco products.
Correct.
So I am going to ask you to sign the sheet that's there, please, as regular procedure. And I'm sure I'm not speaking out of turn to say that the people in town are very happy to see you here.
We're looking forward to it.
Okay.
Like I explained before, I mean, we're actually looking at moving here before the store came up for our last... What we say is our last move in life.
Okay.
So we are looking to move here. We have a house to sell.
Your house is in Juneau.
It is in Juneau.
Right.
We're preparing it to get up ready for sale. When we're ready, we'll put up for sale and when it sells, we'll be on our way.
Okay.
But we have been here scouting out areas and that already, so we're looking forward to it.
Yeah, very good. So thank you for coming tonight and thank you for speaking. All right, let's... I'll entertain a motion for the combination liquor license of Class A, so...
I'll make the motion to approve the liquor license.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Doug. No discussion, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, and item three, Jensen Rising Inc. for the cigarette and tobacco products retail licensing, need a motion for that.
I'll second it.
Doug's got it, Mike's got the second and I don't think we have any discussions, so call the roll on that, please.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll see you early soon.
Welcome to Lake Mills. Yeah, let us know if there's anything else you need that we can help you with.
Thank you.
Okay. Item B, discussion decision on requesting WISDOT to consider signage for the Tyranina Park Road and Main Street. I need to switch my thing. Did you want to read the title on that?
City Council Motion 18-3-2-1, authorizing the city manager to prepare, sign, and send a letter to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation requesting a placement of overhead lane designation signage on Tyranina Park Road at the Main Street intersection.
Okay.
I move adoption of motion 18-3-2-1.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Now we have discussion. So Steve, you want to take just a minute to explain to the public what we're going to try to get done here?
The east, actually the westbound traffic, which is the north lane of Tyranina Park Road, there was a lane change and there's been some confusion with the lanes. And although there's... There's standard signage placed at the intersection, there's been some confusion. People have had a difficult time with the lanes. And the MUTCD, I think that's right, Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices suggests that if that's a problem, there should be an overhead mast with the signs over the lanes provided. And so we recommend that the council direct a letter to WISDOT requesting that based on the confusion with the lane changes. A lot of it has to do with the fact that there's so much driveway traffic at that intersection that people have a difficult time watching all the traffic entering the intersection and paying attention to the signage on the side, so, you know, it only takes a car or two to cover up the arrows on the lane, on the pavement, so having one overhead would significantly benefit.
Yeah, people are creatures of habit, so if you're used to getting in that lane to go straight, yeah, they... Had one the other day that flew right past me as I was going straight, so, yeah.
So this would be a horizontal arm coming off the light post?
And they would create their own pole.
Oh, well, whatever, but of course.
Yes, it would be an arm that hangs out over the street and then there would be overhead signage there with the lane, exactly the same as what's on the pavement.
Maybe it's me, but it seemed like they did some tweaking on the timing again on there, but maybe I'm wrong, but it seemed different and better, so...
It changes with the time of day.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Well, that explains it.
So if you're on a weekend or in the evening, they don't even have the east-west time changes, but from about six o'clock in the morning and probably until 10:00 or maybe all day long, but by nine o'clock at night, the east... The westbound traffic that gets the arrow first, that's not on anymore.
Ah, well, I'm glad to see I'm not imagining things, because I was thinking, this is different, but that's because I came at a different time. Well, thank you for clarifying that. I'm sure other people have noticed that too and wondered what's going on. Okay, good, thanks for telling us.
Isn't some of it dependent on the amount of traffic that's queued because there's computer sensors under the pavement?
Some of it does. Generally what that does is it doesn't... Well, it may determine whether it can stop doing that or not, but generally what happens is if there's a certain length of cars queued up in the one lane, it holds the arrow longer and same with... If there are fewer cars, it holds it less and then at a certain time of day, it must just shut off or the computer must have a... Because it definitely does not happen in the evening when there aren't any cars in that lane, but all day long, but it's hard to tell in the day because there's always several cars in that lane.
Okay, I do want to mention that this request also came through the Public Works Board.
Yes.
With their recommendation to give them credit for time spent on this item and so we hope we get some good results from the state on our request. I think we can call the vote, right? Yes, call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, and so moving to item C, discussion decision on memorandum of understanding with the Lake Mills School District bike trail construction. Do you want to read that?
City Council Motion 18-3-2-2, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Lake Mills and the Lake Mills Area School District.
Okay, this is a continuation of an earlier item that we have discussed, but we need a motion and a second to discuss it further. Do we have that?
I move adoption of motion 18-3-2-2.
I will second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We can discuss it, okay. So you want to fill us in, Steve?
Well, there was a group that essentially worked to get the bike trail done, filled out the grants and everything, and we participated with them along with St. Paul's Elementary and the school district. The school district's requirements required that they get approval of the plans before they were... Before the construction started and before the... Well, actually before the easement was approved. We actually got a signed easement substantially before the construction plans were done. So they came back and said, you know, "We think there are some issues here," and so we sat down and went over them and we tried to be as cooperative as we could in looking at what was there. And we came up with this memorandum of understanding that spelled out, you know, what we expected out of this and what they could expect out of it. And they've approved it, so if you guys approve it, then we'll get our easement.
When would construction start?
Well, we had an easement, so that portion of the construction is already done.
Oh.
It's just that now we're getting a more complete agreement on the... So that we can get a fully authorized easement.
And all the i's dotted and all the t's crossed.
Right.
Okay, is the work already started on that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll be done here shortly. We have to be done by June 1st.
Oh, okay, well, I'm glad to hear. We are jolly on the spot.
Yeah, we're pushing the timeline.
Will, if and when CP Avenue gets completed, will this interfere with or cause the bike trail to be adjusted or what? Or not affect at all?
That was part of the agreement, is that we actually shifted off the school property on the south end and pushed it into the right-of-way. So what'll happen is when the street... So we had to actually do the design of the street, which was on Haven Road, and so that we set it up so that when we actually construct it, we just lay the concrete out over the existing gravel and then just pour it. So there would be a sidewalk there anyways, we'll just make it 10 feet wide where the bike trail is and then... And so it won't interfere with anything, especially CP Avenue, because CP Avenue's thousands of feet away from here.
Okay. That was my thought as I was reading it, just...
They were more along the lines, they were concerned about, you know, being able to have full access to the property and full utilization of the property and it was like it's not much different than a sidewalk, so, you know, your driveways are going to be able to cross it. Even if it had been on the school property, there are setbacks required, it would have been in the setbacks, so it wouldn't have had any issues there, but as it is now, it's in the public right-of-way, so it's not much different than having a street there in the long run and it actually, because the base is already all there and all prepared at the designed height, it actually saves us money when we actually go in and do put the concrete in.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? You can call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Motion passed four zero. Okay.
Moving on down, okay, let's see here, oops, trying to move this up to item D, discussion and decision on authorizing the city manager to sign the WISDOT documents from Mulberry Street. Would you read that, please?
City Council Motion 18-3-2-3, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute documents pertaining to the Mulberry Street construction project.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
So move.
A motion?
I'll second it.
Mike second it? Okay, now, this motion and moving... Now, this motion and moving with this, with Mulberry Street, does give us enough leeway in the event that South Main gets delayed and we need extra time from Mulberry or something.
This doesn't have anything to do with that. Mulberry is a totally different project, and the state will tell us if we can delay it or not, and...
Okay, but we're thinking we might be able to, if we have to.
Right.
Not saying we have to, but just, yeah.
Yeah, this is more along the lines of we're doing the easement, so there's engineering statements, and there's list pendants, and there's, there are all these little documents that come with all that, that they need signatures on that go back and forth between the state and the city and...
Okay, and this gives you the right to sign those?
Right.
Okay, nothing out of the ordinary?
I did them all on South Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
They gave me the authority to do them then.
Okay.
You did them, I did them for, they gave me the same thing on the Blood Lateral Service Replacement Program.
Right. Okay, any questions for Steve about this? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero. Okay, item E, Resolution 18-8. Would you read that and the title?
Resolution 18-08, An Appreciation of Public Service to the City of Lake Mills from Donald Horak.
Okay, could you read the motion, please?
Resolution?
The, I mean, resolution, yes.
Whereas the city council of the City of Lake Mills desires to recognize and honor Donald Horak for his years of loyal service to the City of Lake Mills and its citizens. Whereas Donald Horak has served the Public Works Department of the city with a desire to provide the highest level of service through his valuable talents, excuse me, and expertise in the Streets Department as a heavy equipment operator. And whereas Donald Horak has devoted numerous hours to provide positive contributions to the operations of the Streets Department while exhibiting the highest level of loyalty to the city and enthusiasm for his profession. Excuse me. Whereas Donald Horak's notable height, attention to detail, professionalism, and ability as a heavy equipment operator and problem solver have made a lasting contribution to the City of Lake Mills. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career of Donald Horak and extends best wishes for an enjoyable retirement.
Do we know how many years he worked here? I forgot to ask, I should have asked earlier.
I believe it's on the plaque, if you could give me one moment.
Oh, okay.
Thirty-two years.
Thirty-two years, okay, well, that's a lot of dedication to the City of Lake Mills. Steve, can you add some words? He's been here ever since, well, before you were here.
Long before I was here, right.
But you know him all?
Right.
The while? Anything you want?
Don's been a high-quality operator. And he was skilled at a lot of the specialty items that we would get involved in, like making sawhorses, welding of certain features. So, he did a lot of specialty welding and making brackets. And so, like on the Santa Claus, he went in and he did all those brackets, and he and Tim, and they did handrails. They would weld up handrails, and they did special brackets on the trucks or, you know. So, like if you looked at the chipper trucks, and they had the brackets over the top of them a lot of times, Tim and Don did those. So, Don had a lot of fine specialty skills that he brought in along with his regular construction. He'd been at it long enough that you could send him out. He could do pretty much any job on the street that you needed without spending a lot of time instructing him on how to do it. Like it says, he could figure out how to do it and get it done.
He's going to be hard to replace.
There's always pretty substantial change in the knowledge base.
Mm-hmm, are we already looking for his replacement, or have we already done that?
We've already done that.
Oh, so we have someone new coming onboard?
They're actually onboard?
They have, okay.
They started last week.
All right, well, that's good.
Um, the official start date for it was just Monday of this week, I believe. But he had been working part-time in the Streets Department, so he already had some familiarity.
Good to hear that we're jolly on the spot there, but I'm sure that the city will miss Don's work for us. But we do wish him a nice retirement, so...
We're already onto our next hire.
So, we need to vote on this. Did we already do a motion?
No, we haven't.
Oh, we need a motion. Diane, you did it again. Okay, motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 18-08.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second. I think we've already had discussion. Does anybody else have anything to add? Otherwise, that's, hold on.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, thank you. Now, item F, Resolution 18-9. Do you want to read that one for us?
Resolution 18-09, authorizing the use of a minimum nominal payment for easements along the Mulberry Street construction project.
Okay. So, this is another one of our i's dotted, t's crossed pieces of resolution. Do I have?
I should read exactly the same as the one we did on South Main Street, except for the name of the street.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move adoption of Resolution 18-09.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Anyone on the council have questions that they would like to ask? Or Steve, have anything you want to add? So, this is basically what the wording we need in place to get the easements we need?
This allows us to pay all easements, every easement that's anticipated at being less than the value of $250. It's just saying, we're paying everybody $250 instead of spending a lot of time trying to negotiate over a minimum easement.
Okay.
It saves a lot of time and...
And the property owners on Mulberry Street, when they are contacted by our staff, that we got letters about this week, or maybe last week, but we just recently got letters. So, when you get contacted by the city staff, you'll find out if this affects you or not.
Yes.
Will everybody?
If you got a letter, you'll be affected.
Okay, so if you got a letter, somebody will be there to see?
Probably somewhere around 50 of them will be, I should say, yeah, 50 of them will probably be the $250. Most of them will be nominal. There'll be a couple that have trees or shrubs or fences that may be a little bit more. And then, there's one permanent easement, and that'll be more. But otherwise, generally, the vast majority of them are going to be just a $250.
So, go ahead.
So, in other words, this is really, just permits the construction people to come on the property and if they have to, and to take and modify what they need to do, right?
Well, you're confusing two separate issues there. This gets us the easement, so this is the payment we would make to them to get the easement. And then that easement allows us to do, yes. You know, when you're laying the sidewalk, you're, it's likely that your employees are going to be on the, off the right of way and into the property because you have to, the sidewalk's so close to the property line. So, that being said, you have to take an easement to do that.
In other words, to trample the grass.
Or my flower bed.
Yes, or to, you know, sometimes they put some dirt back there and grade it off and seed it and those types of things. Some, you know, there'll be some of the properties where the sidewalk's really high right now, and they're going to bring that down closer to street level, and then they have to grade back the yard. That'll be part of that. So, people who've got probably the last further up into their yard probably have that issue. There's a handicap ramp that needs to be brought into compliance with ADA code, and so there was a little bit more grading along that line. There are a few things out there where it may be a little bit more substantial than just...
So, we've done all this kind of planning already?
We do the same on everyone. We counted every tree exactly, you know, where they were going to fall and what we were going to have to do to them. And every handicap ramp and every stormwater inlet and all the associated drainage from the whole area, we've done the whole stormwater study. There's a lot of background planning that goes into this before it hits it. And then there's, when you're dealing with the state, there's a lot of review over and over and over again. They are really into making sure every word is spelt right. Every sentence makes sense, oh, yeah. They're very careful.
It'll be really nice when the project's done and we don't have major lakes on Mulberry Street from rain, which can often be challenging driving down the road. So, that'll be nice to get that fixed.
That road will probably actually last. I mean, because we've worked on it three times since I've been here, that's not very good history of...
Right, well, there is no real stormwater.
Most streets last 20, you know, 25 years or more. In fact, we're on a, I think we're on a 60-year schedule now with the way we do our maintenance. But Mulberry Street is just, is not a, soil's bad and the water stays there, so there's nothing you can do.
Okay, any other comments, questions from the council? Otherwise, let's call the roll on this motion.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Do we have to abstain because we live on that street? Okay, well, I just don't want to break the rules.
You're not being treated differently than any other similarly situated people.
I just, on me.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you, all right. Recommendations for future agendas, number nine. We do have next Thursday night our goals meeting at 6:00. And that's just for council and staff that's being requested, not all staff. Do we have anything else that we need to mention for future agendas?
For the April meeting, we have quite a few items. We're going to do the presentation on Mulberry Street that we did at the Public Works Board.
Okay.
What else do we have? I know we'll have an executive session.
We'll have a couple ordinances. We've got a zoning and a cross connection.
Right.
And an update on South Main.
Yeah, by then you can tell us what we find out.
Yeah, we may have, we may have to make decisions on South Main by then.
Mm-hmm, and if, if there needs to be something done faster than that, we'll have to have a special meeting posted, which is possible, but probably not very likely, huh?
I'm not going to say one way or the other, right?
But if so...
Tomorrow, if they get ahold of me tomorrow and tell me this is what we're doing, we may have to have a meeting.
Okay, well, you let me know what's going on and let us know, and we'll do what we can do to move things along. Other than that, okay, I guess we can adjourn. This time we don't have a closed session, so I don't have to do that. Okay, and thank everybody who's watching out there in television land, and meeting adjourned.